Welcome, excuse me, welcome to the February 22nd, 5:30 PM Council Presentations Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge of the flag. City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items at this meeting. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions from the public present. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council should be placed in the box on the table in the council chamber.
Thank you. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are on Agenda Item 4A under Special Recognition and Presentations. The first item is to recognize Detective Justin Williams of the Titusville Police Department as the Titusville City Employee of the Month for February 2022. And Chief Lau, floor is yours.
I'll let you get it this time. Take it next time. How you doing, Mayor? Vice Mayor, Council? It is a privilege to recognize one of our absolutely amazing employees. Detective Justin Williams, this particular incident is being recognized for closing out multiple cases in multiple cities and multiple counties. And it was done really with just good old fashioned community policing. So it really starts back, Justin got a stolen car to investigate and that car was dumped in an area where he developed a couple names of folks that it might be linked to. And then while he was investigating another case, a shooting case, he happened to have seen one of those young men, went over and built a rapport and said, "I know what you're doing and you really need to stop. I'm gonna be back. You're gonna see me again if you don't square this up." It kind of little, you know, not sure if there was a bluff going on. It was the very next day or two days later, I think it was the very next day while investigating, actually it was another stolen car that this youth was taken out of. And at that point, because Detective Williams had already built this rapport with this young man, literally Palm Bay, Rockledge, Melbourne, most of the agencies in Brevard, Titusville had stolen cars that this young man fessed up to, as well as Indian River County and Lake County Sheriff's Office jurisdictions. So literally double digits, 30 or so, not to mention, the sad part is, one of the things this young man was linked to is shootings and he's, again, 14 years of age. Very frustrating for us to realize that. The other nugget of information that I think we'd be remiss if we didn't mention was Justin also built a rapport with the mother of one of the, it was a house that got shot. And the mother really wanted to help Justin and started eavesdropping and through listening to conversations with her children, she was able to get the key names and really the final tidbit. So once again, we have great men and women that do this job day in and day out, but if we don't have the bond with our community and if we don't have parents that are going to take responsibility for what happens in their houses, then we're just, it's so much harder for us to do our jobs. But truly, this is your day. Congratulations.
And as Mayor Diesel's heading back to the dais, I also want to thank the officers and staff that came to watch Justin get his award. So thank you guys back there for attending this ceremony. Okay, the next agenda item is 4B, which is the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area Plan. And Terry Franklin will present the plan and recognize the community participants.
Good evening. I'm excited to be here tonight to provide this incentive opportunity to counsel. And this presentation will provide you information on a Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area Plan that you will have before you at the 6:30 meeting. So what is an NRSA? It's really a tool for the city to revitalize a targeted neighborhood. It stimulates investment and powers residents. It provides a unique opportunity which promotes long-term strength and stability using our CDBG program funds, and it focuses more funding in a targeted area. So what are place-based strategies? It's inclusive planning, which provides for greater community participation. It's a collaborative effort and setting strategic set of approaches. And it's implementation through a broader array of partners and its coordinated solutions. So what are the benefits of an NRSA for the city? It directs CDBG funds over a five-year period, which is our consolidated planning period. And it focuses on job creation, increased services, targeted infrastructure improvements, housing improvements and preservation, increased affordable housing, beautification improvements, safety improvements, and crime prevention. So it provides a framework for progress, self-evaluation, and accountability. So through the development of the NRSA, the assessment process, we examine the opportunities and we also look at problems likely to be encountered. The current status of the target area in comparison to the rest of the city. Ongoing are recent revitalization activities, challenges and barriers that the residents encounter in accessing job opportunities, and critical housing challenges facing the target area. The goals for an NRSA is the groundwork for the community growth. We make neighborhoods attractive for investment. We ensure the benefits or economic activity remains in those neighborhoods for long term. We support the use of neighborhood institutions such as development corporations and community development financial institutions. They bridge the gaps. We foster the growth of resident-based initiatives, which is what the NRSA is all about. So what are some of the regulatory benefits of an NRSA? Well, through CDBG, an NRSA plan creates flexibilities with our CDBG program that is not otherwise recognized. It creates greater flexibility. It eliminates some of the criteria when we're doing economic development for job creation and retention. It creates a benefit area. It also eliminates the public service cap that we usually talk about every year, which is 15%. It creates an aggregate public benefit standard exemption and also for an aggregation of housing units. So through the development of the NRSA, community participation is key. Residents in the NRSA builds trust and support for this strategy, enhancing the likelihood of success. Longstanding neighborhood decline requires multi-pronged coordinated solutions that recognize that revitalization is necessary due to lack of investments. And we also look at the ground truth data with community feedback and experiences to understand needed improvements and the intended beneficiaries. So leverage is also a big part of NRSA. So we always look to leverage with other critical elements and goals. So we will look for other federal entitlement funds. We also will look for, to the promised zones, empowerment zones, and opportunity zones, tax credit programs, and local economic development incentives. So the NRSA requires the determination of boundaries and the eligibility of those boundaries. So we must define a geographical area of the city that is comprised of neighborhoods and its distinguishing characteristics. These boundaries must be all contiguous. We also must identify census tracts and block groups that are part of the NRSA and a map that denotes the boundaries of this target area. So demographic criteria for the NRSA. The NRSA regulations require that the area be primarily residential and also that at least 51% of the residents of that area are low to moderate income. So what will we expect from an NRSA? We should provide viable solutions for affordable housing and economic opportunity needs. Solutions should be accomplished within a reasonable timeframe and improvements should be apparent to the intended beneficiaries. So a big part of developing the NRSA is the community. They have a voice in this initiative. And the successful revitalization strategies bring together a variety of stakeholders and partnerships. Over a year's timeframe, we met with the community on a monthly basis and several interested residents and stakeholders to provide input on the development of an NRSA plan for their community. As a result, a community plan was developed. Through this partnership, priorities and recommendations were established and they focused on improving the overall quality of the life in the NRSA area and creating community visions and goals. I have here a quote from one of our residents that has stuck with me through this development process, and that is, "Our community is a gateway into the city and we need to beautify the area and honor our heritage." So what is our heritage? Through the NRSA development process, the message from the residents was, "We need to change the perception of our community and create pride." The first step in pursuing this goal was the naming of a street that represented the community and who they are. As a result, a street naming idea in the honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born. With city support, a bill was passed by the Florida Senate and House of Representatives providing an honorary naming of South Street. On January 20th, 2020, historical markers along South Street were installed in honor of Dr. King. This was a milestone for the community. So all of the neighborhood services would like to thank the community for their support. We want to recognize many members of the South Street Target Area community and the Concerned Citizens of Titusville Group for their participation, their contributions, and support of an NRSA strategy. Because of their dedication and hard work, staff is pleased to inform City Council of the development of an NRSA plan for the South Street Target Area to be presented for approval later this evening. And we go back to pride. Here is how we see pride. It's people, resources, involvement, dedication, and empowerment. And this last slide is just recognition of all those who represent pride in this NRSA strategy area. These are names of the members that provided support to us. And there was many more that joined us along the way. And I know that some of them are here tonight. And if we can invite them up, I'd like to have the mayor give them some certificates of appreciation.
Thank you. Yeah, come on up, go up here and we'll get there. But let me say, as you do that, it's always impressive when somebody, a group like that, as a matter of fact, Ms. Dyer, what I want to do at some point, because we don't have that many certificates, I'd like somehow for us to get everybody recognized, because, like I said, that's a lot.
Good evening. My name is Kirk Davis and I'm one of the members of the Concerned Citizens Group here in Titusville. And we just banded together to make it better for our community through thick and thin. Unfortunately, we may not all be here to receive the accolades or what have you, but trust me that there were a lot of people that were involved that may go unnamed, but they always had a contribution to make. I just want to make sure that as this plan goes ahead, that we continue to be diligent about planning. That's a good thing, but I want to be even more so with execution of the plan. There's been a lot of delay and confusion and lack of continuity because of the virus, and that's unfortunate. I'd like to see more information from Terry Franklin, her shop, as to how the funding has been for the last several years. I know this is another five-year cycle. And the last five-year cycle is basically when I became aware of it here in Titusville and got involved personally, here with my wife Clara as well. And just being a part of this neighborhood growing up, seeing where it was when I was growing up, when Lynn and the others here, Juanita, Ben, and the others, my wife, it has not really been a good look. And as has been stated, we have had this issue about being the gateway to the space coast. And that involved all this high tech that's moving into the area now. It seems as though that we don't want to be pushed aside. We want to be involved. If it involves training programs for our youth, educational programs that help their chances. Unfortunately, many of us have become victims of the penal system and because of prior convictions, felonies, and the like, they've been taken pretty much off the table by society. But I don't see them as being taken off the table. I see them as a chance to give someone an opportunity for a second chance to be a contributing member of this community. And there's some that are there. It's just trying to encourage the people to be more involved and to see some results from all the, you know, stuff that we go through in the meetings and whatnot, to see some results that they can sort of latch on to, be prideful of, and see that there is a crack in the door that they can pursue on their own. So that's basically what I want to say. And the group, I'm sure, shares in those sentiments. And hopefully, we'll continue to press on and move on. And the bottom line is getting more results. Thank you.
Dan, can I add? See if I can talk. Dan, 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 Dan. Can I add to what Kirk said? Okay. Okay. Kirk, you talked about people who had criminal records as having a hard time finding jobs. And one of the things we're going to discuss tonight, and I apologize, I don't have much voice, is the CPT program. We had a presentation last year from some of the people who had gone through that program. And one of the guys, there were three people, one of the guys was convicted felon. And he got a job. So I would encourage people to look at that program. And then the other thing I wanted to say, I was looking at some of your goals. Blatton Park was one of your goals. And thanks to the generosity of Parrish Medical Center, they've already given Jeff Davis a check to redo Blatton Park. They're supposed to start the middle of April and be done by June. So you can check that goal off.
Very good. And I just want to reiterate, it's very, very rare we see a list of names on anything that many. And that's just impressive to me. That's definitely what we call a "we" thing, not a "me" thing. Thank you very much. City Manager.
Onto Item 4C, which will be a staff providing an update on the Gateway Landscape Project and Entry Signs concept. And Director of Public Works, Kevin Cook, will be the presenter.
The City Manager said this is an update on our landscape gateways and entry signs. We're under contract with DRMP. You guys have seen some of the concepts, but just to, you know, actually, I'd just be to review our presentation. She gave an idea of how the plans progressed for the two entryways that she asked to go to final design, which is I-95 and 406, and I-95 and 50. On the far left, you see they start with opportunity zones, simply highlighting where plants can go. They go to a middle to the colored concept, and the far right is a final plan, which is not as pretty because it doesn't include colors, but that's what's required for permitting and construction. So just to update you that those plans are complete. DRMP, Kimberly Horn, sorry, will be submitting for permit through the state. Most of this is our maintenance area, 95 is not, so we'll have to probably modify our maintenance limits, but that's not something we haven't done in the past. So we estimate that would be around 289,000 currently. As you know, construction will change tomorrow, it will cost more. So the other concept was 95 and 50. Again, just a progression of the plantings. This is a higher speed, so not a lot can be done to medians there. This is the higher speed zone up until the next intersection. But we estimate this to be around 327,000. Everything but the ramps on these drawings are within our maintenance currently. But just to recap, we have two projects active. Previous Gateway project, which was US 1, money in it, and the current Gateway project. Total's around 504,000. Based on the estimates, we have about 617,000 out there. So we have a projected shortfall as of today, likely to change once we bid it, depends on timing and permitting issues. It would depend on, this is a soft improvement, not a heavy concrete improvement, so plants shouldn't be affected as much by material increases, but labor will be. And just to reiterate, we'll come back after bidding to bring the council awards and choices can be made whether we delay one of them, we scale it back, we fund it through another funding source that's not currently in our project. We could certainly, once we get these bid, we'll know that. So moving on from there, one of the new concepts that was asked for is at US 1 and 405. It's heading to the NASA causeway. So again, the left side is opportunity area. Obviously, been out there, there's a lot of opportunity for landscaping, there's a lot of green space there. Consultant tried to bring everything up around the ramps, which is the more visibility areas in the upward end, crossing on the 405 corridor. This is the other side of that same interchange. We don't have maintenance on the far side, but we certainly can, the DOT will certainly give it to us if we move this project forward. This project is funded to this concept. My recommendation would be not to take it forward beyond this until the other two are done, so we know what we have left funding-wise or what the needs are. We'll bring this back as a budgetary ask for the next final design phase. And the other part of this was a science concept. We pay, we used some money out of the general fund to fund, having Kimberly Horn also look at our signs. These are our three gateway entry signs. Everyone agreed they could use a facelift in updating, so Kimberly Horn decided to take them apart. And while the main Kimberly Horn decided to take them apart. And while the main structure stays, it would be expanded, refaced, so we won't take the sign completely down, we'll reface what's there, add more concrete to it, and build. This concept is what they have proposed for us. This is probably closer to the State 50 sign, because it's the only one that has palm trees in the background of it, but we currently have three, 50, US-1 on the south end of town, and Garden Street. This concept could go in all three, because they're all currently concrete block ready. But this is what Kimberly Horn came up with for us. I would estimate this is probably a $10,000 to $20,000 refacing job. We do have enough funds to bid this out and do at least probably two of them on the high end, maybe all three if it comes in the low end. And then the other side of this is, my staff came up with this one. This is a smaller sign that could be put in through DOT, a community aesthetic feature program, which is, Mr. Jordan has asked, we look at a sign for the 405 corridor coming back into town, which we don't currently have an entry sign feature. So Sandra Relarm Office came up with this sign, takes incorporates both our seal and our logos. Probably on size, it'd be closer to a four to five-foot-wide sign for speed, but these are ones that we could get mass-produced, and we think the DOT would authorize them as community aesthetic features, because they can be made breakaway. So that's something the council desires. We can look at a mixture of refacing the signs or adding some of these, either way, or both. This would primarily be aluminum, so I think we'd probably be a lot cheaper than the others, but obviously I wouldn't take the other ones down and replace them with these. But that does, like I said, this is my staff's rendering of it. If it's accepted, we come back either in the budget or after we bid the refacing of the signs and see if we want to add this sign to the entry at 405 or any other entryway. We're lacking North US-1, also doesn't have an entry sign. I think that's our only other major state. Some of the others aren't actually at those city limits, but they are, we do have entryway signs. US-1 southbound is obviously well into the city. We could install one further south, closer to city limits if desired. But be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Member Nelson?
I'm not real crazy about the breakaway signs. Those just, I don't know, don't do it for me, these signs, the little ones. But one thing I am curious about, and I can't really see it on the presentation, I can't see it on our presentation, is what plants are going in, something about the landscaping on these areas. Is there a way I can get something where it shows us what's?
Yeah, we can provide you the final plans. If you're, the two that have gone to final design would have a breakdown of every single plant proposed and size.
Yeah, just so I have an idea of what we're talking about.
So I can, I can get those to the same manager, we can provide them, and I can, if desired, I can make it a summary instead of giving you a plan sheet. It's up to you, if you want to read the plan or if I can make a summary.
I'm happy with the plan.
Okay, all right. So make sure, some people don't like to read them in a plan format.
No, that's fine.
Vice Mayor?
Yes. How large is that sign? How wide is it?
I would estimate it's probably going to at least be five feet, because I think we're going to have to get up to fairly large lettering.
Right.
For speed, probably 18-inch lettering to be readable.
But that was my challenge, because I actually liked the sign. I liked the colors. I would certainly like to see that same signage, yeah, exactly, to go on the modified signs. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
Because it really needs to, and by the way, if you can go back to the stone sign, yeah, I think that the colored lettering that you had on the aluminum sign should go in there, and also, I don't know what the words are above, go back to the other one. What's the words above Titusville?
Welcome to.
Yeah, to me, that should be on the other signs. And I think it'd be a lot more lively. My idea, actually, for this sign, of course, was for 405, US-1, because we have all these people coming from the Space Center, they need to see something, welcome to Titusville. And the other question, so I do like this, I could be more substantial, but I think this is a start. I like the colors. You were talking about 95 and the maintenance. That's one of the challenges I think we have. We look at the maintenance, 95, the embankments and everything. Is FDOT good about maybe if we do change our limits to food, that area that they would, shrubbery, whatever we're looking for to, right there, is that possible?
Well, they would pay us as if there was nothing there, but they would add to our limits. Our agreements with them, any landscape we install is ours. If they were to retake our roads, we have to remove it. Not going to think they ever will. They cut once a quarter, we cut once a week.
Yeah.
So we have an enhanced. They are bringing back some landscape grants. There used to be a 1% grant where every 1% spent on a state-funded project had to go back to grants for medians and such that got taken away during trust fund bad years, but they are talking about bringing it back. So there's some opportunities to have them help fund it. We certainly can explore that. I don't think they'll have any issue with us moving limit lines. We moved to take more US-1 a few years ago. There's no problem. They shift off of their contract onto us.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things we really need to focus on. They're doing, usually once a month, once a quarter, I mean, every three months, that's ridiculous. We're doing it once a
Week.
Week. Everybody would like that a whole lot better for sure. It's a good start. Actually, I like that sign there. I like the color and everything. The other signs, I opinion, are still a little boring.
Oh, I'll credit Sandy for this one, because she made this one. So we can, I'm sure we can figure out how to incorporate those features you like onto the other one.
Yeah.
And get something back around through the same manager on it.
Member Nelson, the sign you don't like is one I kind of proposed.
Sorry, Mayor.
And the reason for that was, I was going to Cocoa every day. I was helping my son coach Cocoa High School football, and I go up Grissom, and I told you guys about this. And they have this nice colorful sign. It's nothing real fancy, but it's colorful like that, it's about the same size, and it just notes that you're in Cocoa. And we don't really have that. So that's where I said, how about just something like that? It doesn't have to be a $100,000 entry. It's not that fancy. If you're coming north on US-1, something like that, that didn't come in south on US-1. Now, the major gateways coming off the interstate, sure, I get that. Everybody does that. Palm base, got it on the side of the overpass there. And I think I just saw somebody else was doing that. But anyway, I like that for, not the big sign, but for a colorful sign that says, oh, Titusville. And again, like I said, every time I go into Cocoa and I see that sign, it notes that that's where I'm at, and it's not just a sign that says Cocoa, it's a nice colorful sign like that. So I kind of like that. Member Nelson?
Okay, can I sort of make you happy?
I don't know.
I think my problem with that is you have these black posts, and instead of looking at the sign, I'm looking at the black post. So if we don't have the black post, if we have a different color, then maybe you sort of blends in with it. I think I'm okay with it. I think it's those black posts that just sort of, their artists in me look straight at the black post as opposed to the center.
I'm trying to think, but I think you're right. I don't think Cocoa has a black post. I don't recall.
No.
So if that's a problem, we can fix it quick.
We can have a post pattern suited any color you want.
What I really like is the color, and that something other than a state road sign that just says Titusville, that I thought the Cocoa sign, I was going to say snappy, but people laugh at me for that, but it looks good. I think that could have the same effect when people drive into Titusville.
We certainly can look at post options that, I think Sandy, I'd say Sandy just put that on there.
I'm good with black posts, I'm good with white posts.
I have a daughter that's a designer, so she would just go, no, Mom, no.
A lot of upright posts can be done decorative, fluted, like our downtown light poles and things that have some bridges where they look a little more decorative than just a flat pole. I think just for her Photoshop time, it was just a black line worked better. So we certainly can get some options.
I think it defines it nicely on the outside, but we'll go from there.
Yep.
Any other questions? I see none. Thank you very much. City Manager?
Onto item 4D, which will be another staff presentation on parks, parks and open space ordinance, and Mr. Brad Parrish will be your presenter.
Good evening. This is something that started a couple of years ago. Let's see. So February 2019, there was a project that was brought before you for a subdivision that was going through a planned development rezoning, and you had a lot of concerns about the open space, how we were applying the open space criteria to that particular development. And in fact, this is an excerpt from the minutes from that meeting. You said that the open space standard or definitions were not well-defined. You had requested us to clarify code definitions and requirements, and such as defining open space, parks and neighborhoods, and looking at size requirements and other, and other things as well. So we spent the last two years researching this issue. We want to bring this issue back up to you tonight just to get your input and maybe some direction into potentially an ordinance to bring back to you in the next couple, few months. The code right now has minimum open space requirements for certain types of developments, and it specifically lists out for planned development, a planned industrial development. There are some minimum open space and civic space requirements for developments inside the downtown. You're familiar with the urban village. You recently dealt with a master plan for that. This is an excerpt of open space definition in our planned development zoning. This is pretty much the only definition. You could see, I'm not going to read it to you, but you can see that it has passive and, and active type open space rolled in the same definition, even provides some examples of what they are in the same paragraph, and then also says that you can include private water bodies and stormwater retention areas as part of that, count towards it as open space, as long as it provides some amenities. You had a lot of concerns about how we were applying this definition to that particular example that I, that was brought up to you back in 2019. I do want to mention to you that we currently do not have open space requirements or standards in our standard zoning districts such as the R1B or single-family zoning districts. So if you have a piece of property that has a single-family zoning district on it now, and you want to go forward with a subdivision, there are no open space requirements right now for that type of development pattern. We also do not have minimum open space requirements for multifamily developments in, if you're in a standard zoning district such as an R1, R3. And we also do not have minimum open space or retail urban plaza requirements if you have a standard zoning district such as a community commercial zoning. Again, the downtown mixed-use has its own minimum standards. In our research the past two years, we've looked at how we can address this and how we can, your concerns. Some things we've talked about are really expanding on the definitions of what open space is, really harping on what is, making sure that open space is common, usable open space, that parks and open space include a variety of amenities, that passive and open space are essentially unimproved and set aside in some way. The current standards and those same type of development patterns that I mentioned earlier, such as the planned development zoning, has a minimum open space requirement right off the back of your entire development, 35%. We're not proposing, we have, in our research and our ideas that we've thrown out internally, we're not suggesting changing those minimum open space requirements unless obviously we've received different comments from you tonight. The urban village has a minimum open space right off the back of the site for 20%. We've talked about internally the idea of maybe proposing something that would allow for exemptions for open space requirements for infill development, or if the residential subdivision is within a quarter mile of an existing park. We have also looked at the idea of maybe restricting the amount of natural water bodies and stormwater systems to count towards your open space, maybe max it out to 50%. We have also talked about parking areas, making sure that parking lots are not counted towards open space. In some definitions, they are actually counted towards open space. We have talked about internally about the idea of making buffers and landscape islands and parking lots to maybe count towards open space in some way. One thing that stumbled upon that we came upon was really, how do you quantify all this? And so we had come up with a series of matrices that talked about, well, this is active parks, this is passive open space. How do you really define the two? They share amenities. So for example, a full court or a courtyard or urban plaza, which is generally considered to be active open space, might have similar amenities that you might find in a very natural area or a passive open space area. You might find trails, playgrounds in both. You might find also basketball courts in both in some instances. So it's very difficult, we saw, we found it was really to define both of them, that there isn't a fine line between both types of open space and parks, active and passive. So with that, we decided to go forward with, instead of saying your active space has to have so many water fountains or park benches, that instead, come up with the idea of different types of open space and parks, define each one of them, and then have some minimum design standards for each one. And we've internally discussed the idea of maybe 12 or 13 different types of these. Some of them are considered passive, some could be active, some are more obvious than others. But in some way, adding these types of definitions inside the code to allow us to be able to have a source to look to, to go to when we're requiring developers to incorporate open space and parks and the amenities inside the development. Another thing that's currently existing in the code is the three ways generally that you can preserve a park or an open space as part of your development. You can dedicate it to the city if we're willing to take it. You can dedicate it or have an association or some kind of merchant association manage it as part of that development, or it's just developer-owned. One thing we have kicked around is the idea of including a phasing schedule. So for example, a subdivision that might have 300 residential lots, they may phase the development into two or three different phases. The first phase, we could suggest that if it's going to be the first 100 units, they should automatically go ahead and incorporate some portion of their required open space as part of that first phase, and then so on with the subsequent phases. That's something we do not have in the code, and that's something we could probably consider and bring to you. So these are just some ideas that we have in our code, and some ideas that we've come up with internally through our research the past couple of years. And we just want to get your input on this and potentially bring this back to you in an ordinance in the next few days, next few months, rather.
Vice Mayor?
I don't even know how to start. I'll just say this, it just sounded way too complicated, and I don't think it needs to be. First, I have to ask you, what's the reason for open space?
The reason for open space, from what I understand from the code, is that it provides a recreational amenity to developments. So for example, like I mentioned earlier, some of our current zoning districts or standard ones have a minimum open space. When we, many decades ago, came up with the planned development tool, for example, there was a minimum open space requirement part of that, to make sure that there's some kind of recreational component with it. The PD does allow you to negotiate what that really is. The issue is that we have, the definition that I showed you at the very beginning of the slides, doesn't give you enough of a tool to really ask for very much. But generally, why is open space required? It's a recreational component, and that's the whole real intent.
Well, I'm just thinking the PID, industrial areas, where you're telling me I have to have some open space for what?
So industrial developments come in all different sizes. Some are more professional type with offices and research facilities. Some are more traditional, you know, factories and assembly areas. So I think the idea of the PID, when that was originally created, was to create a park-like setting with professional offices, professional uses and research facilities there. And so the open space that's in there is not the same type of open space you'd find in a subdivision. It's more just trying to create passive linear parks that are, make a more cohesive park-like setting as part of the professional development, which is totally contrary for a traditional industrial-type development.
Right. And that's, that's what's my concern, because at the industrial development, as a business owner, the last thing I'm concerned about is, you know, open space where I could use that space for business, right? And so if the requirement is that I got to have two or three acres, that's And so if the requirement is that I got to have two or three acres that's open, that prevents me from doing that.
Do you want to respond? So, I'll give you an example of vector space, which is a development of regional impact. That development, it has PID zoning on it. It was originally created in county before it was annexed into city. There's a significant area or some lots that have been set aside for open space for habitat preservation, because there were some environmentally sensitive areas on the property. But the remaining parcels have been divided so that you can sell them off to put some kind of industrial use on them. But yeah, it was, there was a master plan created for that entire development. So that's an example of a PID. So the PID wouldn't be, it's not specific, or it's not intended to be for, I bought a piece of property, now I have to set aside part of it.
Right. But you did also allude to the fact that parking areas, right now, that's not part of it.
In some, in some of the development standards that I listed there, like the downtown, does allow you to count some parking areas as part of your civic space or part of your open space. And I think that's the only example I could think of, but that was one, something we thought that's probably not appropriate. We probably need to have that set aside differently.
Okay, I guess what I'd just like to see, definition of why we need, I personally think we need open space for people to be able to recreate in a development, but I just don't want it to be such a big requirement that you can't keep your cost of developing. And you also allude to the fact that sometimes pond area has open space, right? And you said, I guess it's passive even if it has a waterfall, and you, but if it's a playground, then it's an active, active.
Again, it's kind of hard to make that distinction, but yeah, playgrounds can be in both active or passive areas.
Right. And that's, I think that's what I'm just looking for, is just the real definition of what open space is and is required, because I think people just don't understand, why am I doing this? If there's a good rationale for doing it, then, and I really think developers, especially with residential areas, one of the amenities is going to be open space, you know, because they're in this box and they want space. So I think that is something that developers want to do, but we just need to make sure we're defining it in a way that it's not going to harm, but also help with, besides, a lot of open space, well, so with a looks, got them all boxed up in the green area if I want to. Appreciate it.
I would add to that. I think the whole question was, the first question from the Vice Mayor was, you know, what's open space? And then in the February 26, 2019 minutes, the first point was, first slide, open space not well-defined. So I think we're still needing that straight-up, what is it and where's it got to be? And that's just kind of a reflection from what I'm hearing. Member Robinson?
Yes, I like the idea of open space because I guess I'm a cowboy, and so, the definition is extremely important, but I think open space adds aesthetic value to any piece of property, whether it's industrial, commercial, and so forth. The idea of how much, how large it should be is definitely a discussion to have, but open space, whether it's active or passive, I think is very important in any development. And yes, to define the percentage, I guess that, for me, that will depend upon what you are constructing and what you are developing, and how you use that. And if you're downtown or in the, within the city, you want as much, you know, you don't want it to look like a conglomeration of a bunch of houses and places and no one can, can relax. People working there, if it's, if it's business, they want to be able to go out and, and just walk around and relax and, and spend some time with Mother Nature. And I think that that's the idea behind open space. You have an opportunity to breathe, and, and we have to look at it that in defining the definition. And I think because of the nature of whatever you're doing, that's going to determine how, and how do you write that in a definition of open space? It's going to be different, very difficult. But when you're doing that, it's, it has two purposes in the definition. One, the aesthetic value of, of the whole operation, and also to not lend itself to clutter, you know, and, and make sure that people are able to, to walk and get some fresh air and, and see the sunshine.
Very good. Member Stokoe.
I like this idea. I think we're heading in the right direction. From my perspective, I feel like what was happening in the past is it wasn't clearly defined, and then we would have developers trying and then getting confused, and you guys were getting confused, going back and forth. So I think we're headed in a direction where, even though, kind of the Vice Mayor's point, it seems overcomplicated, I feel like what you guys are trying to do is provide options. So when a developer comes in, you need an open space of, you know, 20%. Here are some options of what you can do, and there's no, oh, well, can we count this pond? No, you can't count that. Oh, can we, back and forth. So, I, I think we're headed in the right direction. I'm not sure what you're exactly looking for from us, other than, do we like the direction or do we not like the direction? Is that it at this point, you think?
At this point, yes. We want to, because it's been two years since you've talked about this, we want to make sure we're on the right path.
Yeah, and I'm glad you guys are picking this up to hopefully clarify. So obviously, I'd like to see it again as we kind of solidify the plan, but I think it's, to me, it's going in the right direction. They provide clarity to applicants and developers that are wanting to come in and wanting specifics. I think that's the biggest frustration, is having unclear code. That's all.
And I'd agree that we're moving in the right direction. The simple fact that you're back reporting after 2019, I would still lend to think we need a better, we need to focus on what's the definition, what's the definition of open space in industrial, what's the definition of open space in residential, recreational, and does it change? If it doesn't change, then it's pretty simple. But I think that, I heard from Vice Mayor a little bit, that it should be a little different in industrial park than perhaps in residential. Member Nelson.
I agree, and the only thing I would add is, we probably need to get rid of the parking spaces can be considered open space. So other than that, I agree.
Moving in the right direction. Anything else with that? Thank you very much. Good report, and we're moving in the right direction. We just need to figure out exactly what we're doing here. City Manager?
Last item for this meeting is petitions and requests from the public president.
Yes, it is. Petitions and requests, three minutes, and then the horn goes. Three minutes. I know she's practiced. Two minutes and 59 seconds, watch.
Okay, so I can talk about multiple agenda items in three minutes? Is that right?
Right, you got, not agenda detecting, but, how do we do that?
This is the 5:30 presentation meeting, so it'd be three minutes on this agenda, not the next agenda.
Yes.
Yes.
Any agenda items on the 5:30 meeting, I can speak to in three minutes. Okay, very good. I'll talk fast then. So in regards to landscape concept plans, I would like to once again remind you of the lethal bronzing disease. I believe that your plans are still to be utilized palm trees. I don't know if you're expecting to use the native palm trees or exotic palm trees, but do keep in mind lethal bronzing disease is killing palms across central Florida. Palms also are high maintenance, they need lots of pruning, it's a very difficult place to maintain things right in that busy corridor. They drop palm fronds, and those can be very hazardous on the road, so give that some thought. There are many lovely trees that could be planted in that area in your landscape list in the technical manual. Moving on to the open space ordinance, this is very interesting to me. Open spaces, as Ms. Councilman Robertson said, is very important to people so they get to breathe and be with Mother Nature. Staff's PowerPoint presentation indicates that currently no open space is required in standard zoning districts, including single-family subdivisions. The new open space ordinance will need to consider that the newly adopted tree protection ordinance requires single-family subdivisions to provide an area of 25% of the development area in tree canopy area. This required tree canopy area is common space, as it shall not include portions of individual residential lots and is permanently protected in recorded plat or declaration of covenants such as the homeowners association covenants. The required tree canopy area may contain passive recreation areas, boardwalks, trails, decks, and paths, as long as they are pervious. I'm wondering how staff will include required single-family residential tree canopy areas in the new park and open space ordinance. Will the new ordinance include a definition of common open space to include tree canopy areas? These are just things that need to be considered. Will tree canopy areas be defined as natural areas? The chart indicates that there will be maintenance involved. To facilitate maintenance of tree canopy areas, I'd like to suggest that staff draft a guide for homeowners' tree canopy stewardship, such as Olympia Washington provides. Their guide provides valuable information for homeowners, explaining the value of tree canopy areas and how HOA should maintain these areas, and I provided you a link.
Time's up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much. I bet you were down to fix six seconds. Next up. Thank you, Ms. Kay.
Stan Johnson, and first of all, I want to start with point of order. I had a point of order just at the P&amp;Z last, recently, and that is that they had a number of items, presentations, and then it was said, hey, you can't speak on those items when you're public, which was wrong, and it was corrected. So I'm going to correct you guys tonight, is that anybody coming to this right now, for this, for this particular item, can speak on any city business? And y'all are just talking about restrictions, that's not right. That's not right. It was a point of order on that. So let me go proceed with what, some other things were going on. Is that regarding the signs, I think you need somebody who's professional to do the signs. I think that a professional looked at those signs, would be laughing at them. I'm serious. I mean, when I do things, when I do papers and so forth like that, I, the lettering on that is just far too small for the size of the sign. The lettering is, is maybe artistic, it looks like, whether it's waving seagrass or something like that, but it's, makes it difficult to read. The V is, I don't know, cluttered, and then you have an I in front of the T, which I'm not sure what that is, and so forth like that. But I think you need to have a professional. Kimberly Horn is not a professional sign maker, obviously, and neither are we. We need to get, we have people who are very good at that on Hopkins. Next item, is that the neighborhood revitalization strategy area plan, I'm looking at a project right now, SNJ Oaks, and what they have on that is for over six months now, I've been complaining about, and that they're relocating a dirt access road, and at the end of it is what? Bromeliads and a huge oak tree, that's still not identified on the site plan. So in other words, people can't get to their house by this, they'll just run into the tree or whatever, and it's absolutely silly. So this has been going for six months. I talked to the fire marshal, and he said, hey, by the way, we have, he discovered a state statute of necessity, he called it. Said it's got to be at least 12 feet wide, this access, and it's got to provide public P&amp;Z and council approved a 10-foot in July of last year. Okay, so that was all wrong, and right now, they still don't have public utilities for these houses that are on Mockingbird Lane, and no identification in Mockingbird Lane with showing on the site plan or the preliminary plat. So we've got problems, and I thought they were going to be taken care of, but Joe, I don't have a report from, from staff on that. They had, they were supposed to field visit the 16th, doesn't look like it happened.
Time's up, sir, thank you.
I'm asking for two more minutes.
Thank you, Stan.
I'm not going to.
We're good. Next up.
I'm Bill Klein, live at 3 Indian River Avenue, Titusville, Florida. I want to say, listening to Brad's discussion on open space, I was very pleased. It makes good sense. It makes the city better to live in. One of the things I'd like to offer is, there was a presentation on LID given by Joni Regan that showed like, commercial parking lots and buildings that were almost all cement and concrete, and there was maybe open space because there was nothing else there except a parking lot. And then it showed the new way of adding LID into businesses where you, it can reduce the amount of stormwater by planting trees, having depression areas, what they call bioretention areas. And I think some of the concepts from Joni Regan in LID would fit open space perfectly. And I would like to send some information to Brad Parrish and offer any help in defining open space, but I'm very glad to hear what Brad had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Next up.
Good evening, council. I'm not sure if I'm at the right time or not, because I'm kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. The issue I need to discuss has to do with a quasi-judicial issue that you'll be hearing at the next council meeting, but you will likely be tabling it, and once you table it, you cannot discuss it at all.
Hold for me, first of all. Advisement?
In my opinion, if you do have a quasi-judicial agenda item, you should not be discussing that item until it is under quasi-judicial and in front of you. If an applicant wants to, if she wants to speak in her three minutes, you should not be responding or taking opinions on a quasi-judicial item until that agenda is before you.
I'm not asking about any specifics of an item, I'm asking about the ability to make a presentation. That's all.
We just can't comment.
Exactly. I'm not asking you to comment on the item.
Okay, name, hold up, hold the clock, stop the clock. Matter of fact, can you reset the clock, please? Thank you. That was a good thing.
Sure. Sandra Klinger, 2680 Box Creek, Titusville, Florida, 32780.
Very good. Thank you. Go ahead.
So, my question is this, we, we expected a large turnout, trying to get some sort of guidance from council. We will have a lot of speakers, I would expect. We had 90 at P&amp;Z. Trying to find out, I was directed to go to the city manager's office, and they said I had to come here and ask you, is it possible to make a audiovisual presentation during public hearing? And would you, if we are able to, do we need to divide that? We're prepared to do it either way. We can have each person break our ample presentation into three-minute segments, if you like. We can submit 90 individual presentations. I mean, we're just trying to figure out what's going to be the most expeditious way to put information together in a, in a fashion that presents our case and also provides council information in a usable form. That's it.
No, and I don't, I'm going to comment to that, I don't want to do anything I'm not supposed to do, but what's, I didn't expect that, so I'm not sure where I'm going with that.
That would be a policy question, a procedure question, as far as talking to the manager. I know there's issues with, you're talking about PowerPoints and putting things on our com.
We have had problems with that in the past, where we thought we could do it, and then it didn't.
So I have to defer, I know that we do have.
Yeah, we don't take any thumb drives and put them on our systems anymore.
So.
We do have speaking procedures, and participants each have three minutes. If there's a large group and they want to have spokespeople, who may request for additional time for that spokesperson, as opposed to having everyone in the 90 speak, you could take that into consideration.
Can this, I use it as a question. B, discussed in the next couple of days, because as I would understand it, this wouldn't happen until the, comes before us, or is that later today? No, that's, that's not now.
It's on your agenda.
It is on the agenda, but if it's tabled, it will not.
Right, okay, so that would be later. I guess what I'm getting at is, I'd like to see, you know, I don't know if this is the time or the place to figure out, can we take a PowerPoint or whatever it may be? I guess what I'm looking.
No, we can't.
Okay, so.
Because of the corrupt, we've had thumb drives put into our system that corrupted our network, so we're not taking thumb drives anymore.
Member Stokoe.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, we've had in the past, if this might be a benefit to you guys, if you guys want to print out your PowerPoint, and you can hand it to us during it, we've had people do that. And then, again, in the past, what we've had, rather than 90 cards, is if you guys wanted to have a spokesperson. to have a spokesperson, and we have made a decision and voted up here to say, "Hey, rather than that, why don't we let one person talk for 10 or 15 minutes to give it?" And then we could look at any visuals you have that way. That way, we're not doing anything on our computer system. I feel like that would be the most efficient use of your guys' time, potentially.
The difficulty is, well, it's multiple layers of information having to be overlaid and explaining, it's visually complex, and so it helps having something where you can see the layers applied on top of each other to understand the issue fully. So, I guess I can try to find a way to do it with transparencies or something else to try to explain that.
And what I'm for is anything that gets a presentation across, and truthfully, if you got 40, 57 people speaking and 55 of them say the same thing, we kind of get lost up here, and quite honestly, it's not that effective. It sounds really good, we had 57 speakers, but when they're saying the same thing, I'm like, "Come on, hang in there, hang in there." But if you have a presentation and you perhaps are the speaker, and we get a 15 or even 20-minute presentation that means something to us, that's different. So, yeah, so that's why I asked the question. If that could be done, shoot, if that works, that's what I'd like to do, but I, I didn't like, we can do that.
Well, that's what, we just wanted guidance from y'all, because we've kind of been told that we got three minutes and that's it. So, we were like, "Okay, so we'll divide it amongst 90 people and go three minutes at a pop." If that's what we have to do.
And again, what I'm looking for, if this comes to fruition like this, is a presentation that is understandable, complete, gets the point across, and we're not hearing the same thing at 12:30. But, and I get that, but I appreciate you coming and asking that. Thank you. Next up for this particular meeting's petitions and requests. Almost forgotten the name of it. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. I'm Mary Spar. I live in Cocoa, and I'm really glad to see you moving ahead with the parks and open space ordinance. It's really important to get the appropriate standards for the parks, and it's also very important to have updated open space requirements. There are three ordinances that really need to work well together. Tree ordinance, the LID ordinance, and the open space ordinance. Right now, the existing open space ordinance is traditional stormwater on provision discourages compliance with the tree ordinance and the LID ordinance, and this needs to change, and hopefully, your planned update will correct this. In contrast, the tree ordinance and the LID ordinance are set up to work very well together. This is a priority for staff and citizens giving input. I'd like to compliment staff for their hard work in getting the tree ordinance to complement the LID ordinance. Now it's time for the open space ordinance to blend well with both the tree ordinance and the LID ordinance. I ask the city councils to strongly encourage staff to carefully coordinate the provisions of these three ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spar. Always miss you.
We still on petitions and requests, right?
Yes, yes.
My name's Connie Milton. I live in Windover Way, Farms. I'm kind of speaking about the same thing Sandy was talking about. It is my understanding that, yes, I understand the problem with thumb drive, but we've also been, we also been told that we could possibly email it. There would be no virus in an email on a PowerPoint presentation. Email it to a Virginia Blaylock. So, could we possibly email it as opposed to a thumb drive? And then Virginia would...
You can email it, and we would distribute it to council. That's correct.
Could we email the PowerPoint and then have Virginia Blaylock provide it to the person?
I'm seeing no. And, and, and that again, Stan. So, if we could have, again, going back to what member Stokoe said, we've had it before where, and I get it's not the same deal as having the color slides and all that, and maybe even music, I don't know, but I do know that if we can get the information and get what you're trying to say, and then maybe have a presenter guide us through that, that would be a whole lot better than 97 different folks saying different things.
Okay, so email versus thumb drive is still a problem.
Well, either way, we could get it, but we won't be able to probably put it up and show it at that time.
I got you. So, you could, instead of making a bunch of copies, then y'all would have it there as opposed to us providing the copy?
Yes, ma'am. You can certainly mail anything you would like to the council members. Our system has a problem with external sources picking it up to display it. So, that's, they will have a presentation if you send it to them.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to make big packages for you and have it, hand it out that day. You would have the presentation on your computer? Is that what we're saying? Okay.
Vice mayor?
Emily, I just want to make sure that when you all come, it's gonna be extremely difficult to listen to 93 people.
Yes. Oh, it'll be more than that.
Right, and, and because you're having 93, I can make an assumption that you all want to say the same thing. No, no, no. Right? So, I would certainly suggest that you do have one spokesperson. You certainly can have everybody stand up and say, "Everyone who agrees with this presentation, stand up. We understand. We are not slow." But I guarantee you, we will be slow if we have to listen.
Understand. That's why we came to ask the permission to do that, because actually, on our petitions that we have here, it actually says, "The community, we, the undersigned residents of the Windover Farms community, may ask various members of our community to represent our position on the listed topics above at meetings with Brevard County, City of Titusville, and state officials, or representatives at meetings at public hearings. We support this petition being used to represent our position as a community and individually on the above-mentioned topics by Windover community representatives, speaking on our behalf in the event we are not present to individually represent ourselves."
That's what we're looking for.
This is on, this is only from two of our 38 volunteers so far.
No, we got to.
Okay, so I think that's the way to go is...
Yes, please.
Gotcha. Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up for this meeting. You hadn't got her balance yet. Okay, with that, I see no more. City manager? All right, our business has been done here tonight at this meeting. We will reconvene at five minutes till seven. Meeting is done.